From last time. It being seven o'clock, we will. Meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board. On October ninth, this meeting will be recorded and televised and also available. On demand eventually. If the meeting were it were to. If the electronics were to go down, we would continue to conduct the meeting as a live only meeting. And with that, we'll open to public input, which we're happy to hear commentary from people in the. Public either live or on Zoom who are wanting to discuss something that is not. That is within our jurisdiction, but that is not currently the subject of a pending public hearing or on our agenda. Commentary on any pending public hearings will be heard only during those public hearings. So is there anyone who wishes to speak? In the public input session? Becky online, no, okay. Then we will continue along administrative review. We have nothing new. Public hearings, we have a new public hearing regarding four Palet Drive. For Palet LLC is requesting construction of sixteen new parking spaces with associated site improvements. The project seeks the site plan review under zoning by law. Section one ninety-five dash one oh four and special permits per section one ninety-five dash eighteen for reduced parking. Section one ninety-five dash twenty-one for location of parking, section one ninety-five dash forty-three for property line screening. And section one ninety-five dash forty-four for landscaped buffer strips and any other zoning relief deemed necessary. The property is this is identified as assessors parcel ID map eight block ten lot. Ten and is in the multifamily RM zoning district consisting of approximately one point three three acres. So. Casey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Casey Ferrer with Howard Stein Hudson here on behalf of the applicant for Palet LLC.
You sound like you have marbles in your mouth. Want to get a little closer or something?
How about that? Is that better?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's a little loud. Like you said, it's a four Palet Drive, which is if you were to drive up Tings Row Road, take a left on the Palet Drive. It's the first multifamily building on the left at the cul-de-sac. It is an existing two-story eight unit two it's eight two-bedroom units. Residential building. Historically, it was built in nineteen sixty-one, I believe, and since that time. Parking for the residents of that unit or those units has been utilized with three parking spaces. Kind of in the front adjacent to the right of way, and then the remainder just within the right of way, either along the edges or stacked like a parking lot. It is in my understanding that the town has approached the owners issued. Basically, a. Demand that they situate the parking on their own property going forward. So that is why we are here tonight. Just a little bit of kind of the existing scenery we have from Palet Drive is you have paved parking extending from the right of way into the front of the property. You have a walkway that goes into the building. Adjacent to the building, you have a twelve-foot drive aisle that kind of extends the length of the building. And then behind that you have grass for about ninety feet. At that ninety foot mark, you have a wooden fence that crosses the property. And then the Palet Drive, the four Palet Drive property extends another approximately two hundred feet past that fence. That two hundred feet consists of woodlands, some wetlands floodplain. And then also the Castore Restaurant has paved some of their parking lot into our property. Which is kind of adjacent to that wetland in the back there. The situation or the the sighting of the proposed parking lot is essentially taking over where that grass space exists now behind the building. And the proposal is essentially to remove the majority of the pavement that's at the front of the site. Where they park their three parking spaces and have access there, remove that. Expand the twelve-foot drive aisle that's next to the building to provide an adequate safe access to the rear of the building. That drive aisle. Do you have the the layout plan that you can pull up? It'd be easier if I can point to it. But so the drive aisle that's currently twelve feet was not adequate for fire access. So expanding that to mainly twenty feet, there is a portion of it that's condensed to eighteen feet, which was okayed by the fire department. And that's just because of proximity between the building and the property line. We don't have additional space to get that twenty feet. And this is, can you just go one more? So this is where we're expanding the drive aisle here and right there is that pinch point for that eighteen feet. We have provided the fire department turns for the trucks. They have approved them. So they are okay with the fire access as proposed. At the very front, we're more, we're situating an ADA space with a regular space as well. So there'll be two parking spaces out in the front. That is off of the drive aisle, no longer directly off the right of way. So there's no backing out perpendicularly into the right of way. It'll be situated perfectly within our drive aisle. And then as you move forward to the rear or as you move to the rear of the building, there's fourteen parking spaces proposed at the back. For an eight-bedroom, I'm sorry, an eight unit of two bedrooms. Approximately nineteen parking spaces is required as per the zoning by law. A special permit can be granted to reduce that by twenty-five percent. Historically, approximately fourteen cars are in use during or for these units. And those again have been parked out front. And we're proposing sixteen total parking spaces. And majorly that's because we just don't have more room on the site to provide additional parking. So we've maximized the space that we have available in providing these fourteen spaces. Existing stormwater, all of the stormwater from the site of the impervious surfaces on the site currently. Drains towards the front into the right of way of Palet Drive. And at that point enters what I will call the municipal drainage system, which is really just a curb break at the end of the. At the end of Palet Drive where it drops into a drainage easement, which is an intermittent stream, a ditch. You know, where it travels adjacent to the property between our property and Dunsheer Drive and the rear of the Dunsheer Drive properties. To that wetland in the back. So again, everything currently from the property runs towards Palet Drive into the drainage easement. And then travels to the rear of the property into that flood zone, the wetlands, et cetera. The proposal is that the front approximately halfway up the building. We have to situate a high point in that entry driveway just to maintain grades as much as possible. Have adequate drainage going so that we don't get icing or ponding or all that. So there's a high point situated about halfway down that drive. So from halfway to that drive to the front, that's remaining draining towards Palet Drive.
Can you point where that is?
Sure. So about here halfway down that side drive, this is all going to remain draining towards Palet Drive. As the existing condition does. There's a net reduction in impervious surface that is draining towards Palet Drive. We do not, there's no drainage infrastructure in the front for us to tie into even if we wanted to capture it. So in coordination with the town, they basically said because it's a reduction, it's an existing condition, they don't mind. They 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 approve of it maintaining its current existing paths. And going towards the end of Palet Drive and out towards that drainage easement. For all of the rear, everything that that is now proposed to go towards the rear, we have situated a Rain Guardian bunker unit. Which is a treatment, a treatment unit similar to I've I've proposed in the past in front of this board of Rain Guardian turret. It's a very similar unit. It's just smaller and more condensed and provides higher treatment for lower flows. Because this parking lot is not very large, we can use the lower flow rate to get a higher treatment percentage where that discharges to a proposed pond. That service pond will attenuate up to just before the ten-year storm event. It'll fully hold the two-year, the five-year, and it just overtops in the ten-year storm event where it discharges back to that drainage easement. Which then flows towards those wetlands. In the, in every storm event, we do see a reduction in volume towards the drainage easement. And then every storm event except for the hundred year, we we see a reduction in rate as well. In the hundred year, the rate is increased by point zero two CFS, which represents approximately one half of a percent increase. Which falls under the de minimis flow increase requirement through DEP. Again, I know and we had this, we had a meeting with conservation last night, so I do know a lot of the butter concerns that we've heard. There is a significant issue with flooding in this area. A lot of it occurs off-site. There is, I understand there's a covert that once it's maintained, a lot of the times it drains out. I can't control how the state or the town maintains their drainage infrastructure. All I can do is propose on my site. Measures that meet stormwater standards and try to help the existing condition. And basically what we're doing is we're showing an overall reduction in volume discharging towards this drainage easement and towards the wetland. And that in turn. I'm not going to say it will alleviate flooding concerns, but it will not compound them. Flooding is mainly a volume issue. There is a rate component to it, but if you have more volume going in, you're going to have more flooding. So where we're reducing volumes throughout every storm, we're not compounding a flooding issue. The last portion of this that I will mention is this is a flood, we are in a flood zone or a bordering land subject to flooding. And we did provide a revised. A revised grading plan that shows that we meet on a foot-to-foot increment. A net increase in storage on our site as required by working within the floodplain. And then with that, I can turn it over to questions.
Just a very, very small question. You say you will be removing pavement in the front? Okay, how much is going to be removed and how much is proposed to be added? I presume you're adding more than you're taking away, but.
Correct. So there is a net overall increase to the entirety of the site, but to the front of the site, there is an overall decrease. I don't have that exact number, but I can get it for you as part of them. We have to provide a revised set anyway. So we'll more clear, we'll add some detail and clarity to that.
I should be curious to know what that is.
So Casey, all the drainage is going to, you're not diverting it to anywhere else. You bring it all the way to the existing culvert in the back?
So. In the end, existing condition and post-condition, everything ends up here.
Oh, yeah, right.
In the, in the existing condition, there's this and it flows this way and down and out. In the proposed condition, half of it does that, and then the other half comes from here and then goes into the pond and then to the same location.
So what happens right now with the grass that's there now? Does it drain that way now or is it just drain, it just pervious into the ground right there?
Correct. The the grass has an absorption rate of, you know, thirty-nine percent or something, or runoff rate of thirty-nine percent or something. So there is a portion that stays in in location, and there's also a portion of it that runs off and continues towards that wetland area in the back.
So am I correct, you're going to get rid of the grass? Cover it with pavement and then cut down a bunch of trees? And what, and and the trees, where the trees are now is going to be? More pavement or?
Correct. So the the proposed parking lot extends into the or past the existing fence, which is essentially the start of the tree line. So what we have is some of the parking lot and then the proposed pond is kind of where the existing woodlands, portion of the existing woodlands.
You're going to be building this pond? Or is that pond there?
Correct. We're building a, it's a detention pond for this.
So there won't be any trees left?
No, there will. There's a significant amount of trees that are further back here. So this is where Castore is paved on the four Palet property, but everything else around here is vegetative trees. So the existing, existing fence is somewhere in this area. So we have a portion of the parking lot and then the pond built past the fence. And then the trees begin.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that it?
I'm sorry, I was out of turn.
So is there a letter from the town to the owner asking for this to be done? You verbally mentioned that.
A written letter.
Who who from the town has asked for this to be done?
DPW, Fire Department.
So they've formally asked the the applicant to put this parking lot in?
I believe it's a cease and desist of the parking.
Yeah, we were told that we could not park on the.
Do you want to come up to the?
If you don't mind. If you don't mind, just state your name and.
Yep. Kathy Ronberg, one of the principals of Fort Palet LLC. We were told that we were not allowed to park cars in the center of the right of way. And that we could, until we had another solution for parking, they could only park along the edges. And during. Extreme weather events, extreme snow conditions, they would have to park somewhere else. And Castore has graciously granted us a corner of their lot where we can park. Where we can have the tenants park, but the long-term solution is to build parking somewhere else. And the current backyard is the only place that's really viable.
That's on your property, right. Okay, thank you.
At the conservation meeting last night, they did suggest that. The Conservation Commission may want to hear a little bit more about the reasoning from the DPW and the fire chief. So I think that they may be invited to a future Concom meeting to get a little bit more background on that because. Of the trade-off between the wetlands and trees and. Grass.
Right. No, I agree. Thank you.
And safety.
Yeah.
Okay. Should we go take it around? Joel, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm looking at. I'm actually looking at the supplemental data data report. The proposed sub-catches. So which sub-catches are draining towards Palet Drive and which sub-catches are draining towards the pond?
Are you looking at the drainage maps?
Yeah.
So there's a sub-catchment that wraps the front. I don't. I don't think you have that up here for, do you have the drainage?
It's the supplemental, it's the supplemental data report. Yeah, yeah. Basically what you're proposing, I just wanted to see where the water was.
Yeah, I can describe those sub-catchments if we can hold them up.
Yeah, and and my question, where I'm where I'm heading towards is the water that goes to the pond in the back then where. One, where does water go when there's overflow? So both in terms of your your stormwater, the rain guardian thing, and then also the the pond. And but also they just generally wanted to see where the sub-catches are falling.
This is the sheet you wanted?
No, if you were to go into the supplemental data report, it'll be one of the appendixes of the supplemental data report.
That's it. Then you just go to the very bottom. It's the very last thing.
It'll be appendix G, the very end.
That looks like it there.
So what we have in the post-development is we have two oh two S. Two oh two S is the only sub-catchment that goes directly to the pond. All the other sub-catchments, two oh one goes directly to Palet Drive. Two oh three goes directly to that drainage ditch. That's basically area that's unable to be captured by any of our stormwater systems. And then two oh four is an area that goes directly to the wetlands. So that's an existing, we're not touching two oh four at all. But two oh two is what is on.
Okay, if you if you go up just one, Becky? So this is the current.
Existing, correct.
Yeah, and where is the, where is the water flowing? In this case, one oh one, one oh two.
So one oh one directly to Palet Drive. All of one oh two goes more planned south, really southwest into that drainage. And then one oh three is the existing that goes towards the wetland, directly to the wetland.
Okay, so if you go back to the proposed, so what's essentially changing is that there's a large section of that. Of the middle section that's going to be captured by your system.
One oh two.
Basically, so all the existing grass and some of the wetland, or sorry, sorry, some of the woodlands that existing goes to the drainage ditch. Is now being paved and that's going to be captured, put into the pond and then discharged to the drainage ditch. So in the end, it has the same end location, but it's just being treated, infiltrated, detained first and then discharged.
Okay, is there, is there a way or is it feasible or does it even make sense to drain? The pond more directly to the wetlands as opposed to the drainage ditch? I mean, because what I'm thinking of is the drainage ditch is obviously a source of an issue for neighbors backyards, and so I didn't know to what degree that could be.
So the drainage ditch is hydraulically connected to the wetland system. So it is our intent to have the least disturbance possible to that rear area. If we try to redirect it directly towards the wetlands, we'll go further into the buffer zones. It'd be optimal for us to discharge it to its current location and allow the natural hydrology to just carry it to the wetlands in the end.
So what kind of curbing is there going to be on the?
The proposed curbing, I want to say is by two minutes. But I could be wrong, being one second here.
It is. And so where does the overflow from the Rain Guardian go?
The overflow, so that discharges directly to the pond.
Okay.
It's all it is, it's it's basically a catch basin, but it's a treatment unit that discharges directly to the pond.
And then what about the pond? Where does its overflow go?
Overflow goes into that drainage ditch.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Casey, have you guys thought about, I don't see it on the plans, any landscaping between the new parking lot and the two neighbors to the south? Number twenty-three and twenty-one Dunsheer?
So I, that came up during the Conservation Commission meeting yesterday. What I told the Conservation Commission is we'll walk it with the owners and we'll, we'll see what's able to be done. They requested, it was actually partial requests. Some of them wanted screening type arborvitae's. Others wanted more habitable species that would kind of allow a habitat to ensue after they're planted. I do know for screening purposes, and I did say this to the Conservation Commission yesterday, I'm sure you're aware and being adjacent to construction. But the the trees that will get planted, if any, aren't going to be full grown mature trees that are going to provide screening on day one. So, you know, the type of trees that we want to pick. Has to be in line with some sort of objective that isn't immediate screening because that's just not feasible. So if the Conservation Commission wants to go a direction that's, we want to create habitat or we want to do this, you know, we're happy to try and accommodate. Certain requests, but you know, I just don't have the ability to bring in a fourteen-foot arborvitae tree that's going to screen this from neighbors immediately. You know what I mean?
Agreed.
And we also want to be, you know, we want to be conscious because this isn't, the ownership group here isn't some investment group that has tons of money behind them and they're doing this for profit. This is something that's been thrown on them and they're trying to figure out the best way to just, you know, achieve what ultimately the town needs them to do.
You also have Mike Anita? Chris?
Casey, would it be possible to do granite curbing along that bottom edge along where the drainage ditch is? So that it maintains its integrity during plowing and and stuff like that?
Sure, I can certainly speak with the the applicant and see if that's, you know, something that we can accommodate.
Because we wouldn't want it losing integrity and then spilling in.
Untreated discharge, yeah.
How high is the fence around the drainage pond?
The chain link fence, I believe it's a six foot.
Six foot, okay. Are there any safety concerns?
You're talking about the proposed fence, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any safety concerns with that type of drainage pond?
So in the past, no, there is kind of a new wave of requirements regarding surface ponds. If they detain a certain amount, if they attenuate a certain height, like specifically Burlington, for instance, if it detains or attenuates, I believe it's a foot. You need a fence around it just for, you know, child concerns and safety concerns. So there is a movement towards requirements for ponds out of safety concern. I don't believe Chelmsford has any requirements for those, but we did throw in the the fence just as a safety measure because we do understand that Dunsheer has children and, you know.
Okay. You said it was eight or six?
I believe six.
Six, okay. And the riprap that is going into the drainage ditch for the overflow. Is there any way that that can be positioned to the rear to make it flow more directly into the wetlands?
Yeah, so that leads towards. Yeah, I guess. So if we were to put it on this side, the existing flow path for this specific area is straight to the ditch.
It is.
So you'd have to work more towards the back into those buffer zones, take out more trees to try and redirect all of this to go towards the wetlands.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Most of mine were answered last night.
Informational meeting last night.
Mike?
Nothing in particular. It looks like it's going to be compromises, no matter how you look at it.
John?
Casey, you had mentioned in front of the existing building, there was a plan to remove pavement there because it'd be adding pavement in the back. And adding a lawn in front of the building. Are there any plans to like have features so that someone couldn't drive on the lawn? I'm just thinking people might be used to parking in a certain area and just drive on the lawn once it's planted or whatever, if if guests arrive or something.
There is currently nothing planned for that, but what I can say is. Let me just get to the grading plan real quick. So once we remove that pavement, that grass is going to have a pretty steep slope going back up to tie back in. So it might just be not enticing for someone to try and drive a vehicle in somewhat of an off-roading scene. But we can look more into that and see if there is anything we can add that also the town might be okay with to to do that.
Anything else, John?
No, it's, thank you.
Casey, the dimensions of the grass to be removed in the back, what what is that? And how does it compare to the dimensions to be planted in the front?
So there is an overall increase in impervious. There is an, so the amount that we're planting out front is not.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering what's the, like, like what's?
So there's ninety feet worth of grass. I'm not sure exactly how wide the parcel is.
In the front?
In the back. So the width is ninety.
Ninety, I was going to say.
So the lot width is approximately seventy in that location, so you'd have about a ninety by seventy. We're not taking up. Um, we're not taking up the entirety of the grass side to side, but just as round numbers. Um, and then in the front, there's three parking spaces worth of pavement, so you probably have approximately thirty to forty feet of pavement wide, that's gonna be twenty feet deep. So significantly more removed from the back than added to the front.
So forty by twenty going in-ish, is that what you said?
Yes, approximately.
And ninety by seventy coming out?
Approximately, it'll be less than seventy, but just for round numbers, yes.
Okay. I mean, I was just there, um, and, you know, there's a bunch of kids in the backyard playing.
Yeah, and it's definitely not optimal for the owner, uh, to lose the grass. They do not wanna lose this grass space, it's one of their, the best parts of this building, uh, especially for living in the building. Um, unfortunately, right now, they just don't have any other options.
And also, I didn't rea- I didn't really understand where that little side road was going, so I made the mistake of driving down it.
Dead end.
Uh, couldn't turn around, couldn't really make a three-point turn to get out of there, that was, it's very, very tight.
It's tight, right, so we are expanding that, um, like I said, it'll be twenty feet, it'll be twenty-four feet behind that parking proposed at the front, eighteen feet at the pinch point, and then twenty feet through to the access to the rear. So it will get bigger and it will get better for access purposes.
What about, um, I, I don't, I'm, I don't know, um, exactly how this works, but I know in other countries I've seen more so people using pavement, that's like pavement bricks that have, have grass in between. I'm sure that's more expensive, but it would...
So that was actually an optimal solution for the owners. Unfortunately, we just don't have the groundwater depth to be able to put in a system that's gonna be permeable from the surface, but also have the box underneath it to be able to accept, infiltrate, and treat all of it. We did look into it as an option, um, it's just not an option for the, the groundwater that we have here.
Is there any option to do part of it like that?
We, so the rear of the site right now is an existing septic system, so that's compromised. We'd have to basically remove all of that, retest it, um, so it's, it's technically, that wouldn't pass soil testing requirements through Title V for a system, so we couldn't do the rear. Um, and then for the, the very front of it, um, we, we do not have any soil data to see where the groundwater is, but we also have to maintain a separation from the building for infiltration as well. So we'd really be cutting down the amount of infiltration area we have, and we'd have to have a pond anyway to make up the rest of it. So there wouldn't really be a reason to do a portion of it as, uh, pervious pavement, but then also still construct the pond in the back.
I have one more item.
What's that?
I have one more item, I forgot.
Okay.
Um, Casey, there was some comments about the fence along, I think, I think towards the rear, not being in the greatest condition. Would it be possible to also replace that fence as part of this project as well?
We can look at the, the condition of it and see if a repair or replacement is necessary. Um, I'll work with the owners when we walk for, for landscaping and, and see what we can do there. Um, just to add, not necessarily on to that point exactly, but I know, um, some of the butter's concerns yesterday was regarding the drainage coming onto our site. Um, I do wanna mention that, in an effort to be as cooperative as possible, um, in the revision that you guys will receive, we're going to do our best to take the information we have on that pavement coming in and just try and include it in the, in the stormwater report. Um, you know, I had a pretty long explanation last night of why we didn't, but just in an effort to be cooperative, uh, we'll try and add that in the next revision that you guys will see.
Thank you. Yeah, and I have another question as well. Can, can you walk us through the other, you, you discussed the special permit for the parking reduction, but there's also the other special permits, can you walk through each of those and, and say what it is that you're asking for? So the landscaping requirements, the width of buffer strip, landscape plan?
Yep, so they're mostly related to landscaping as part of a, a parking lot. So, in essence, the, the request for the special permits revolves around, this isn't something that, it, this is something that's gonna be a significant economic burden to the, the applicants as it is. Um, in an effort to be able to get it done in a way that the town's requiring us to do so, um, we need to be able to balance the cost of getting it done to something that's reasonable for them to be able to afford. Um, landscaping, while it is nice, um, on new construction and, uh, other proposals, this isn't really the same situation where we're coming in, asking to build a new building that's gonna make them, you know, a whole bunch of money. This isn't an economic positive for this applicant. So what we're asking for is basically a give and take on, you know, we wanna provide this, the town's requiring us to, we wanna do as much as we can, um, but we also can't make this economically unviable, because if this becomes economically unviable, nobody wins. The town still is gonna issue them a cease and desist, and then they also won't have parking.
Yeah, but I was wondering if you could go over the specific individual permits that you're requesting? What is, what is the standard that you're asking really from?
Okay, so the, the... The no off-street parking shall be located within ten feet of the right-of-way, so that is from Article Five, Chapter one ninety-five, twenty-one. So that is for the two parking spaces that are up front. Um, so those specifically, where we need those there for ADA access, or for ADA to meet the ADA requirement for a new parking lot. Um, so the, the property line, property lines with residential uses shall be screened, uh, from non-residential uses. Um, this is technically a residential use, but I believe the town sees it as commercial in nature because it's multifamily. Um, so we're just requesting that as part of what I said earlier, just a reduction for the landscaping required to, to put this in. So that would be all those Dunshire Drive properties on the side. Uh, we're just requesting a special permit to not have to landscape the entirety and screen the entirety of that, uh, planned south property line. Um, the landscape buffer strip, so that's along the property lines, along property lines, a landscape buffer strip, I believe it's ten feet is required. Uh, we simply just don't have the space for ten feet on that northern, or planned north property line, uh, to be able to put in a ten-foot landscape buffer strip.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But are you looking for, like, instead of ten feet, eight feet buffer strip, or no buffer strip?
Well, essentially no buffer strip, cause that curbing on the top side is essentially one foot from the property line to fit this in.
So Casey, I have a question for you.
Sure.
On the drainage, how much on the Tinsborough Drive facilities up there, how much of that property drainage is coming onto this property?
So we actually went out there and looked at this after the conservation mission meeting.
Yeah.
Most of these properties, or this property here, one oh sixteen Tinsborough, drains to this, um, I guess it's like a riprap kind of depression that's at the back of their property. We have a berm along our property line that's approximately a foot to eighteen inches higher than the top of that riprap. So it's unclear to us exactly how much of that water eventually makes it to our property. Um, we are told that, in essence, this overwhelms and then comes onto our property. We don't have any survey data that supports that, uh, but so, in an effort, like I said, an effort to cooperate, uh, we're gonna try and model this to the best of our ability based on the information we have to show how it impacts or does not impact our drainage design. Uh, but so, again, this property, one oh six here, uh, this parking lot, essentially all of it drains to two curb cuts on either end of this riprap kind of depression. Castores basically just runs off directly to that wetland with no treatment or anything.
Yeah, cause I just see if the town's making you put this parking lot in, then the town should also make that residence there, or, or those, uh, units that are there on Tinsborough Road to handle their own drainage and not come onto your property.
So it does appear that they have some sort of drainage mitigation at the back end of their property. It is not clear what it attenuates, what volume it discharges, how much it takes up. Um, we simply, I don't have drainage information from them. Um, what we can work to do is try and model it to the best of our ability, um, with the information that we have to show.
That came up last night as well in the ConCon meeting, as well as the fact that there are some drainage issues downstream from this that are impacting that area that the DPW has on their list to, uh, look at eventually.
Right.
So one of the things...
DP also, right?
But this, this applicant shouldn't have an, have to pave to solve the problem.
No, but this is one of the questions that came up yesterday in ConCon, which is why they wanna talk to DPW and, uh, the fire chief, is why are we requesting this to be done now? Could it wait a little bit and then see if those downstream impacts can be mitigated first to relieve some of that flooding? And then do this as part of that?
Okay.
So that was one of the reasons why ConCon wants to have further discussion with DPW and, and fire chief to see maybe there can be some temporary, um, accommodations in the front to find temporary parking while DPW mitigates the rest of it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, so they're saying...
But the concern is, is that this, this will, it will potentially make things worse. It definitely won't make things better, but no one seems to wanna do this yet.
The sense I got, just, I mean, I didn't see the whole meeting, I watched much of it till early morning hours and then couldn't watch anymore, but, um, there, it sounds like there's places downstream draining towards the river where there's backup problems that are backing up here, causing this flooding to be worse. And so, while they're hoping their drainage system will improve that, the part that impacts this property, it's, you know, in a, in a setting where rain is, it, it, water's increasing in some places. I mean, it's making, potentially making the problem worse that's being caused by downstream. So if they could fix the downstream, then that would make this less of a problem.
Casey, in the, in the existing condition right now, how much of the water that, particularly in higher level storms, that's coming on this property, just, just from the, just from the water that falls on the property itself, how much do you think is actually being infiltrated versus how much is basically flowing, you know, is, is exiting the property?
Um, in, in, in gross values or, or percentages?
Just percentages.
So, so approximately, when you have a grass surface, you have approximately thirty-nine percent runoff. These, this is in an HSG, a hydrologic solo group B area, so that's actually, that number is actually a little bit, uh, there's more runoff associated with a hydrologic group B, but just in general, if you have a good grassed area that accepts stormwater, you have a thirty-nine percent runoff.
Right, I mean, so, I mean, what I'm thinking is, even if there wasn't an issue of mu- water coming from the other property, you know, the, the fact that, the, the, just the strip itself, it's, it's not, it's so narrow that it's not really gonna offer any, if, you're not, just from what falls, the water that falls on itself is gonna be runoff.
Right.
And so, at that point, it's overflow. And, and so if your overflow is a lot, or if your overflow's a little, whatever they're doing there isn't gonna change that. And i- it's still gonna flow, the, the, what they do, it seems to me, is more of a positive, is instead of all of that flow coming onto both of those properties, or three of those properties, it's gonna just be more focused on, at the corner of that one property, which is about as close as they can get to the wetlands without actually interfering with the, the woods and stuff like that. That to me seems like that's a betterment rather than making things... It's that it's better, better to put in this parking lot in terms of stormwater than it is to leave it as it is right now.
Because of the accompanying...
Because essentially what you're doing is you're shifting the amount of water that's going into the, into the drains just behind these houses, you're shifting that over closer to the wetlands. So, and so now, a lot, a lot of the water that used to, that is currently now flowing into the backs of those properties is now gonna flow much, much closer to where the wetlands are.
But wouldn't you get some infiltration through the, the drainage ditch as well? That you're essentially bypassing?
If that's saturated, there's no infiltration in that.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just...
When that's flowing, it is basically, when you have a, a water surface, you consider that completely impervious because there's no infiltration into a water surface.
Okay.
That's part of engineering design.
Everyone have other questions answered for the moment? We have a bunch of letters, but I think probably the next thing that we should do is open to the public. In accord with that? So I'm gonna ask that people come up one by one and state your name and your address, and try not to be exceedingly long-winded and try not to repeat things that other people have said.
Michelle Coputo-Starkweather, nineteenth Dunshire Drive. So I've heard numerous statements of, well, we'll just drain it more into, quicker to the wetlands. Unfortunately, the wetlands, as you may or may not know, there's a culvert that goes underneath Route Three A. It's owned by the state, it has to be handled by the state, and that is one of the biggest bottlenecks. You can pour all the water into the wetlands you want, but you know where it comes? Our yards, because it comes down into the wetlands, or it comes down from Swain, or it comes from wherever, comes down Deep Brook, bottleneck's there, and it backs back up into our yards. It's, all of our yards get dr- get, get flooded, some of the homes get flooded. There's, draining it directly into the wetlands is not helpful. I did actually send an email to our state representative, Rodney Elliott, and requested that he come to last night's meeting and this evening's. He apologized that he was unable to come, he had a death in his family, seemed like a good reason not to come. Um, but he did, he did note that he had sent a letter to, I have to put my glasses on, cause I can't see my, my letter, but he sent a, a letter to Secretary Monica Tibbetts-Nutt of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation on December eleventh last year about the culvert that goes underneath Route Three A. And he said he didn't receive a response, he's also sent another thing about, apparently when they did the DOT sidewalk project, there was some questions about, again, that's culvert, and he's again going to address this culvert. Until this culvert is addressed, and there's a couple more bottlenecks further down, I've been told Butterfield and I don't know where, somewhere else, um, didn't know where they were, so it didn't stick in my head, I'm sorry. Um, but until those are addressed, pouring more water into the wetlands is not going to help us. Every time there's more water in the wetlands, it comes back into our yards and our homes. And in fact, if you've never gone over to where the culvert is after a big storm, we honest to God have a whirlpool here in Chelmsford because the water can't get underneath. So I, I am very concerned that we're hearing, we're gonna put in a drainage, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna drain it into the wetlands, but that's how it ends up in our yards. So that's kind of my comments on that, thank you. Thank you.
Do you want me to address one by one, or do we wanna let them come up, or...
What?
Do we want them to address each, after each comment, or just have...
Or do you want me to take a list and we'll kinda come back to them after?
Come back after.
Come back, this is public, let them, public speaking.
James Starkweather, nineteenth Dunshire Drive. First point I wanna make that Mr. Walsh brought up, uh, the abutting property on Tinsborough Road. You were, you were asked the town needs to force them to direct their flow away from Four Pulet Drive. Why is Four Pulet Drive allowed to direct their flow into our private property? Then I would like to have an answer for that, you don't have to answer tonight though, but it seems a double standard that these commercial businesses gotta be held to a higher standard, but us private property owners have to just suck it up. And that, this is a serious flood area, and you'll see pictures later on. And so, other notes, uh, the fire truck needs to turn around. Is there a, a state law, state bylaw, or a town bylaw that requires this? Why can't, I mean, and how are they gonna turn around in that new parking lot? There's no way they're gonna turn around if they have to drive back there, so that, that's, that's, they can do a two-point turn and out as, as it is. And, uh, in front of the property, there's some grass that could be converted into parking spaces. And there's also, if the property owner owns paved property behind Castores, that could be parking area instead of chopping down trees in clear violation of the Environmental Protection Act. And they're asking for waivers not to replace the damage they do, which is to me unacceptable in that, cause it's a nice wildlife sanctuary there now, and it's really come back nicely. And then, this is new news for me also, the septic field, where's that located?
It, it's, it's under the grass.
So now you're gonna pave over the septic field?
It's out of service, it's been disconnected.
Yeah, it, it's...
Yeah, it's, it's.
So why can't it be removed?
It, it's an old septic field from when the building had septic, when the town brought sewer in, our mother converted to the sewer. And what was under, what is the backyard went dormant as far as septic is concerned.
I'm going to make you fill it. I made you fill it.
Thank you.
Mine was filled.
No, they take the tank out.
And then, the natural hydraulics of the water flow, if you come to our neighborhood after a storm, it does not flow. It does not flow down, it flows up first, it does not, and then it stays for days. It does not dry out. I don't know how this pond will empty. The water table's too high. And again, yep, I'm a big advocate of the Environmental Protection Act, and I love, we're seeing wildlife we haven't seen in years in our neighborhood, and it's going to be destroyed by taking down all these trees and taking away the grass that the kids play in. And there is room out front. I mean, I got to share the one picture that I got from Google.
So what, excuse me, if, you probably should pass it to someone on the board and then go back to the microphone because otherwise no one can hear you.
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
I should have made more copies too.
No, it's totally fine. It's just if you talk into us.
So you can hear it, yes.
Well, no one else can hear.
Oh, that's bad. Gotcha. So on the Google map, it does not show the cul-de-sac piece, it just shows a nice little L. If the road was shaped like that, there'd be plenty of parking areas out front, and that, that would be a cheaper option for everybody. And again, there's lots of communities where, yeah, off-street parking or on-street parking, there's restrictions, but people work with that. It's part of living in a city or a metropolitan area. So convenience at the sake of risking flooding my house, my neighbors' houses, perceived or actual, and I live there, and it's actual, and the destruction of wetlands in clear violation of the act, when there's other options available, it's, just needs to be reviewed. And my last statement is, there's a watershed study for a Deep Brook area, and I think all new construction should be seriously slowed down until the results of that study because we don't know what impact this construction will have without that information. Thank you very much.
Hold on a second. What property did you say the, the owner of this also owned? You said?
They owned a back piece of Castore's.
It's the same property.
Police would have paved over, over the property line.
Okay.
It's paved over the property line.
So that could be worked out whether Castore's paved that in violation? That, that's, that's something the town should be able to figure out. But it's already paved, so why it cannot be used for parking for the apartments, I don't understand, and that would prevent having to chop down trees. Thank you.
Did you say they paved the wetlands or they paved adjacent to the wetlands?
It went in, technically, it's into the buffer zone. I'm not sure if it's in the actual wetland.
That's a separate issue, though.
It doesn't, I don't know how many spots that is, but.
You couldn't get that?
But I'm just offering alternatives to changing a sensitive area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Amelia Caputo Starkweather, nineteenth Dunshire Drive. I have some photos from December nineteenth of last year. We had some pretty decent flooding. We're fortunately up a little higher, so it didn't come into our basements, but I heard from some of our neighbors that they did get a little wet in their basements and very close to their garages. It was about a one and a half inch storm, I believe, with the current infrastructure, it was quite a bit in. My current concern largely with the, is the shoving a parking lot in such a small lot to accommodate for where all the water has to go, it goes to one point, a retention pond. We're in a floodplain. Obviously, the retention pond is going to flood eventually. It is designed to flow outwards directly, it's designed to flow outwards and directly at the Dunshire properties. Pallett Drive will not flood from their pond. Dunshire will. We already flood regularly. The wetlands backflow from the 3A culvert, it is physically too small for the water to get under, and it takes hours to days for the water levels to go back down. That flood pond, that retention pond is supposed to handle a ten-year storm, so that means every year we'll have a ten percent chance of flooding. We are experiencing more severe flooding more frequently. If it's a five-year storm, it's supposed to hold, but what if it's already rained a year and the flood, the pond hasn't had a chance to empty? Is it going to flood? It's the mitigation ditch. The mitigation ditch goes directly into Deep Brook, which goes into the wetlands, which goes into the culvert that's physically too small to drain it, to the Meramec. And so my main concern is that we were told at the conservation meeting that the pond is supposed to drain in seventy-two hours. Drain to where? Into the ground, into the mitigation ditch, into our yards, our homes? That's directing it directly at properties. It's going to go, so our neighbor at twenty-one, their garage, they went, the water line went on that December storm, went all the way to their shed. That outflow is directly pointed at their home. That's where it's going to overflow. And our mitigation ditch was dug to protect Dunshire after flooding in the two thousands, and it already adjusts with the level of Deep Brook. And I don't think we can handle a pond draining into it too. Thank you very much.
Patricia Moore, I'm at twenty-one. I'm a single mom and I have two severely disabled children, so I have many issues with this. He went out in his backyard, luckily I looked out the window, he was up to his waist in water. I had to go running out. Also, I wanted to put a pool up for my two disabled children, and I was not allowed to. It would have had to have been fifty feet from the wetlands, but yet they're allowed to put a parking lot up, and I wasn't. So that to me is hypocritical. Me and my sons, we like to look at the birds. We've seen all kinds of birds, they have bird books out there. Now we're not going to see birds. There's no fence. We're right at the culvert. We're the ones that had it all the way up our yard. We're right behind Castore's. And so we're going to look out now, and what we're going to just see is a parking lot. So if that's going to happen, I'm going to have to insist, we have no fence, I'm going to have to insist in order to keep my disabled children, who are very vulnerable, safe to have a fence put up. And I don't think that should be on me. Also, one of the trees they want to take down is on my property because my sister had the property surveyed. So I think it should be re-surveyed because I think they think they have more that's actually my land. One of the trees is on my property that they want to take down. So those are my concerns. All right, come on, Liam.
Hi, I'm Saritha Fernandez at twenty-seven Dunshire Drive. I'm actually happy to hear some of the stuff that they talked about today. I submitted a picture, I think earlier today, I don't know if you have it, of the colored version. One of my major concerns was the water that's flowing from the other properties that's going to be exasperated by the additional pavement that they're putting in. Because in my opinion, it looks like it's going to be just a superhighway to the retention pond and overfill and go through, because as they mentioned, they designed it for, you know, in all the documents, it states two years, I'm hearing that can hold five or more, but for the added pavement. You know, and they're saying that because the other water was normally going through, it's just going to still go through. But the problem was, a good percentage of that was being absorbed by the property. So I don't know if I could walk up there real quick and show? That'd be okay? So as you can see here, this is all pavement, this is all pavement, this is all pavement. And as they said, this portion of it here is actually from them where they overpaved it. This is about a hundred and two elevation. It was one oh three inside of where they're planning to put the retention pond, and they state that no water is going to be going into here when they put this here. I'm not understanding that still because this whole section here is about a hundred and two. If I make that shorter, it's going to roll in. And when you go and stand in this area, so if you guys have a chance, and ladies, if you have a chance to go into the back of Castore's, it looks like it's pitched right in that direction of that property now. It looks like some could be going this way. I mean, that kind of makes sense, but water's very destructive. You know, even though they say it goes perpendicular to the lines, it's going that way, when you have a high volume of flow, it can be very unpredictable. So I'm here, but we see, we see water all the time. And when they're expanding this fire lane, makes sense, but again, they're getting rid of some grass space that's here, go about it, and it's just going to ride through. So you're going to add some excess water that might have been going this way before that will be going this way. And over here, they say that there's a berm. I don't know if that berm is staying, but still, if that was overflowing and coming in, they actually have an opening in the berm here to allow the water to come through and go through the filtered section, which will go in and out into that woman that was just up here. That's her property, number twenty-one. So she's going to get the brunt of the first part that's coming in here. And this side is going to be unfiltered water if it goes over into the retention pond, which then will put more contaminants into the wetlands, which is concerning. You know, why don't you have another filter there? I don't know. I don't know why this either can't be reclaimed or used, as the other gentleman mentioned, you know, to put parking there. And just to give you guys a little bit of history, this existing curbing was put in in December of twenty-twenty-two. Back in the nineties, when they put in the sewer, there was a catch basin here that they removed, and from the nineties all the way up until twenty-twenty-two, there was no, no flow. There was flow being overflowed into the ground, but there was no actually specific point for the water to go through. In December of twenty-twenty-two, the owners, whoever was taking care of the property, dug a ditch from their property into my property, which is here. I ended up going back and forth with the town. Their mitigation was to come in here and put some riprap to help move the flow. And it helped a little bit, but not really. I'd helped with the ditch because that was the big thing. I'm like, why are they allowed to dig a ditch over into my property? Because just let, be aware, this easement here is on Dunshire Drive's properties. We pay taxes on this property. You know, we don't get to not pay taxes even though it's being used for water flow. They talk about kids playing in the grass, I agree. Kids are always playing in Pallett Drive. And the parking for, as long as I've lived there, I've lived here since two thousand and fifteen, has been this direction with the lights going this way, up until December of twenty-twenty-three, when they were given permission to park along the roadway's edge, which was actually perpendicular. And I was glad that you asked the question about the grass because I actually have pictures of them parking over the curb that I had to ask for, because we were getting erosion from all the water coming down Pallett Drive and coming over to the property, and they're actually parking over the curb. Like their whole, two tires are going back and forth over because they wanted to hit more cars around this curb section. So what you can't see here is this actually curves up a little bit, there's a little bit of grass here, here. A little frustrating. So I just kind of wanted to explain a little bit of that. I want to see, hopefully, when he comes back with some more details, what that looks like for that additional flow. Because I really don't know what's going to happen to her house when all this water, water hits here. And there's a couple of pictures in the letter that I submitted as well. We get water constantly. And this area here, it looks like they took some elevation marks, so it'd be really interesting to see what that looks like, because visually, it's pretty flat. It's pretty flat in this whole area, and there's constantly standing water here. So.
Can I ask you, can you explain again the granite, the curbing that you, they sewed in and then they removed, a catch basin?
In the nineties. So when they put.
So, you know, no one else.
No, I'm just trying to get an idea.
I'm just going to say, no one on TV can hear what she's saying.
There's a microphone right about.
Okay, all right, fine, sorry, my bad.
So, because we did some back and forth with, with the town because there's been a lot of things that have happened. They had their dumpster on my property from two thousand and fifteen on. We had them remove it, that's part of the reason why they lost some of their parking in the front of the building, because that had to go on their property, not on my property, because they had the dumpster over here. Then, like I said, in twenty-twenty-two, they hand dug a ditch, and I actually have pictures of them digging the ditch. And I'm like, why? Why do I have to suffer more? And then doing history, we looked at some drawings, and the engineer is like, the town engineer's like, oh, there's a catch basin here. He's like, I looked, there's no catch basin, and it actually was the sewer cover. So when they ran the sewer line and this easement here, and there's also like the water runs here as well, like the actual pipe, they tied it into the, they used the catch basin as a sewer area. So they did this. I had to ask for more curbing because they had opened up like a fire hydrant up at the top of the hill, and it blew out a big section of the hill. So they were supposed to put in a, an earth berm, and their solution was additional curbing. And they were going to make it this big. I had them run it the whole length of the curve here, so if you ever go to the site, you can see it there. So that's kind of like historically what's going on there. I, I think I understand though what's going to happen for these people here with the lights directed at their house. What's happening to me is since twenty-twenty-three, when they were allowed to park along, but it's perpendicular, their lights are going in my bedrooms like all the time, because the people that live here, some of them have jobs, all hours, right? They're coming and going. They go out to their car to smoke a lot. They go out there to listen to music. When you start your car now, what is it, nine minutes for the first start? And it's just, their car's on and their lights are facing directly in my house, like to the point that I was waking up and I'm having trouble sleeping. I can't even open up my windows in the summer because the light's coming right in. So I get what they're going to go through. Because if you take away these trees, they're going to have to deal with what I'm dealing with. It's hard. So, it's hard. So that's kind of like, I'm happy that they're looking at some of it, but there's some other concerns. So I don't know if it's possible to go to like my letter, there's some pictures in there. Because the big thing is the drainage from those other properties. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is there's a light pole. I don't know what order this stuff is in, but if you scroll down, it's like in the thing, here's, just me up here to be easier, this orange fence, if you go to the property as well, we just put that up because people were walking through our property. This orange fence line here, that's the edge of the easement, the edge of our property. There's a chain link fence that's a little bit further in, that is the other side of the easement. The water is constantly like twenty, thirty feet in here. You can see the high elevation of the main road up here, right? It just, just comes downhill and in. So that's kind of that one, just to show a little bit of flooding. And if you go up down the next one, it shows more flooding. So this is on the inside, and it's about this, this deep. It rusts the bottom of that fence all the time because over time, there's a lot of clay in the undersoil there. So the water sits on there, and it's compressing the top soil, and it's just, you know, our lowest point is now inside instead of the side of the easement. Go to the next. Ducks, wildlife swimming around my bushes. Again, you can see, this is the way they used to park prior to last December. They would park along in here. Some people would park here if they had an overflow of parking. People normally would park up here or along the edge, which is a lot better than perpendicular. They're glad you can go. This is because the fence, the trash here often overflows. It's frustrating. They only have two recycling bins here. They're, they often are overflowing or pushed over. The person that comes and takes care of their property picks them back up. This is when they were plowing stuff through, but the fence here being in disrepair, and you can see it here, it's just falling apart. The trash comes through into the easement, it gets washed into the wetlands. We constantly are picking up trash by like the bag full. And I think I said, I need to keep on going. Sorry, it was a word dog. This is like where they normally put these, and you can see, like I said, the kids just ride around there. I'm surprised and happy that no one's ever gotten hit, but sometimes it's pretty scary with them going around that circle because people are coming in to go to three, they're also, they're also parking in there. And you can see actually what's interesting too, this portion of the fence, that's our survey marker. This portion of the fence isn't even on their property, but the rest of it is. And this is the current parking situation. There's fifteen cars in this parking lot area. I know that they mentioned that there's average of fourteen. I see fifteen, sixteen on pretty much a daily basis, and mostly it's in the evening. If you go there during the day, like I don't know what time of day you went there, it's not a lot of cars there during the day. It's pretty much evening. On the summer, when they have, you know, parties and things like that, there's been times that this thing has been jam-packed full of people. But these lights, all my bedrooms unfortunately are at the back of my house, but this, you could see clearly where that drainage easement is. Go to the next. And I guess on that, I'm concerned that they're going to overflow their parking as is today. And I think one of their statements was they have kids, they want to keep some more green space, but also when those kids get older and they want cars. I mean, there's going to be even more. These are lights. I did the other. Could you back up though a little bit? And one more into the higher one. I think to notice here too is there is a lamp in the front of the property. I think they could do better with it. I don't know if it's town lamp, I don't know if it's their lamp, but this thing, actually, my, my land goes way over here. But this thing, actually, my, my land goes way over here. My whole back portion of my property gets pretty lit by that thing. And when the DPW came in to do, try to fix that swale, they actually took down some trees. And when they took it down, some stuff that was helping block that light went away. So again, I'm getting complete light, you know, it's, it's hard. So seeing this project, I get why they're trying to do it. I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's other ways that they can do it, but like, I would love to have a fence back here to block it. And I, I would love for them to have something to block their light because it gets pretty tiresome. It, it's hard. And you deal with this water and there's going to keep on getting water, just keep on getting pushed in there. So. My other concern was the two handicap parking spaces up front. I get that it's just two. I don't know if there's anything they can do to block the light from that. But it would be great if they could because it's just one more thing of having to deal with light and stuff like that. But I am a little bit scared for her and her property on 21, just because that excess water, I know she has a pool back there. With this water on the property, how is that going to be stable? How's that pool not going to go over? Like, I'm concerned. I'm concerned with the stability of the property. I'm concerned with the water coming into our houses, causing mold and everything else. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
Didn't you already have a turn?
Coming back, sorry. Michelle Caputo, Starkweather 19, Dunshire, coming back. Um, so the subject of the culvert has come up multiple times for that 3A. And I understand they're saying, well, that's not anything we're responsible for. And I'm not saying that you should be responsible for that. That's the state's problem. But it is an existing situation. So to say, well, we don't have to worry about that, it has to be taken into account. It is a bottleneck, no matter what you say about like, well, then we can just move that water along. It's not going to just move along. So we mentioned it last night, we're mentioning it again, and you guys mentioned it as well. Or part, one of the things we're asking for is if there's a plan or no plan, that somehow at some point, that culvert going across 3A and the other things going, the other bottlenecks going down are going to be addressed, can we please put this on hold? And they're not begging for a parking lot. They've been told they have to make one. And we're really sympathetic to the whole, you need parking, there's a rock and there's a hard place, we're one of the rocks. But we also don't want our homes flooded. So if this can be put on hold until the other mitigating things need to be handled and can be scheduled and completed, then that, I think most of us wouldn't have a big deal with. If you want to put a parking lot and you're going to put a fence so we don't have to see inside, then I think our issues would be much less about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are a couple of people on Zoom, but I don't see either of them wanting to speak. Nancy had her hand up earlier, but I believe it's because I was having technical difficulties. She may have been trying to give us a signal.
So to address, I, I think one of the main common themes in that was the flooding. The flooding within the wetland, within the ditch, coming back up to the Dunshire properties. Um, again, I want to, well, I guess I'll start with this. Stormwater standards require us that we do not make flooding scenarios worse. This project could not be approved through you. This project cannot be approved through Conservation Commission. And this project could not be approved through DEP if this project were to make a flooding scenario worse. All the hydraulic calculations show that a overall reduction in volume is proposed going towards that drainage easement. Um, I am not in any way saying that that's going to alleviate any culvert concerns down from the state. All I am stating is that from water particularly originating from our site or even passed through our site, it is not going to compound an existing issue. The water from our site will be leaving in less of volume than the current state. Again, I did mention there was a slight of approximately half a percent increase in the flow rate uh, for the 100 year storm event. So that's the storm that we expect once per every 100 years on average. Um, but for the two, 10, 25 year storm events, which is what we were required to analyze, everything is a reduction through and through on the three analysis points, the wetland, to pallet drive and to the drainage easement. So I am sympathetic with the flooding issues. I have them at my house as well. But the hydraulic calculations based on this and the, the approval criteria require that we do not exacerbate that issue. Um, you do have a review from the engineering department here that agrees, um, that has peer reviewed the stormwater analysis. Um, there was a question about a rawls rate. I've addressed that individually with Sheila. The current design that is in front of you, um, is adequate stormwater wise. Additionally, I, I guess to kind of address some of the alternative analysis, um, the grass out front, you're not allowed to reverse into a right of way. Um, you couldn't just pave right up the grass and allow them to reverse into the right of way. That's also not allowed via the town. The existing pavement that's down by Casadores, I don't know if the intent for that was we'd access through Casadores, but then we'd have to obtain a, a right to access an easement through there. It's not really viable. Additionally, the dimensions on that pavement is not enough to get us the pavement that would be required. Or the, the parking that would be required. So additionally, that's also not a viable alternative. I don't know if you want me to address the wetland setbacks questions, but just real quickly, there's different setbacks from the wetlands, different surfaces require different setbacks. A pool is considered a structure, which requires a 50 foot setback. Pavement has its own setback, which is 30 feet. We meet all wetland setbacks, um, in this scenario.
One question I have on the retention pond. One person pointed out that it's, instead of draining at the north end, it's draining at the south end. Is there any comment you want to, I mean, is it, what are the pros and cons of having it discharge closer to Tingsboro Road as opposed to?
Well, so what happens is all of that drains towards the, you, you typically you want the direct path to the wetland. So what, or to the, the endpoint. So we have it towards the south because that's the natural direction of flow. If we were to then outlet it to the north, we'd have to then create a way for it to make a turn and then head south. So it's, it's just not, that's asking for backup issues and issues of the pond, um, not overwhelming and then not flooding back this way. So optimally, you just want to put the outlet towards the, the direction of natural flow, which is planned down to the right.
Yeah, but I mean, if you had it, if you had it flow out, I mean, you could, I mean, you're constructing it, you can pitch it however you want. And you could pitch it to release at the north.
No, but again, that runs into the same issues that we talked about earlier. We'd have to expand the scope of work to then go more into the buffer zones to kind of redirect how that goes.
It's for a stormwater structure. So we think that's less, considered to be less invasive than a permanent, I mean, than a, you know, a building structure or whatever.
Still removing, we need to remove a lot of trees.
We think.
Right.
Casey, could you, for the next meeting, would it be possible to get the fire department turnaround diagram?
The auto turn plans? Um, if they weren't submitted with this plan set, I can certainly add them to the revised plan set.
Would they be on their own or would they?
I'll add them as, I'll add them as part of the, the plan set that comes in. So they're attached to the plan set.
And then would it also be possible so we can get an idea of what that retention pond might look like? Um, a side view of it, like a profile?
Yeah, you mean just like line work sketches in kind of a detail format?
Yeah, of, just so we can get an idea of how high it would look and relative to the land around it.
Uh, just to go back to the fire department turns you're talking about, into the site or around the cul-de-sac?
Uh, into the site.
Well, also turning with.
The swept plan.
Yeah.
Sweep path analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is just a statement that it wouldn't, it would be, we've approved it on a couple of other, you know, the subdivisions where instead of the turnaround on the right of way, we had a hammerhead, right? It would be nice if they had a right of way hammerhead here and leave the parking where it is out front. And I, I mean, I understand it's not, it's town property, but this just makes, this is, this is a cluster here and, and we're, and just dealing with existing, existing conditions. And I'd love to see the water get resolved first before we move forward with anything.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I think it might be a good idea to have DPW director come in and.
And the fire department.
Yeah, and fire department. So we can have that discussion with them about the, the pros and cons and the trade offs and what are some other alternatives that the town might be able to do in this case? Because flooding concerns aside, it's a lot of wetlands that's being disturbed, trees being knocked down.
Because we're still going to have the big paved area out front.
Yeah.
And there's people going to probably still park there.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I mean, we're, we're changing it. We're, that's a waiver on other jobs where we're going, doing the hammerhead instead of the circle. So I don't know. Just a thought. But I don't know what we could do.
I mean, I guess if we are looking for input or, or a conversation with DPW and fire and, well, I guess the DPW, I mean, uh, the conservation is probably not looking for fire. But if we're all looking to talk to, um, DPW, maybe we could do that together.
Yeah, I don't think we can ignore the situation with the existing water.
Right, yeah.
The town has to address that at some point.
Right.
And if we approve this project, it may be 10 years from now before they address it.
Right.
So we should try to bring it now, to address it now. And if Rodney can help with the state on the cul-de-sac, on the culvert.
Or Simon or?
Yeah, or Simon.
Okay. So do you have a list of what we're looking for from?
Generally, yes. I have revisions to make, responses that I have to make to the engineering letter. So you will see a revised set of plans from us addressing comments, a response to comments. You'll also see the fire department turns added into the plans. And then I will create a profile of how the pond will kind of interplay with the elevations of the site.
Okay.
And then we will also be, um, I'll walk with the owner to discuss the fence and any potential landscaping that we could add along the screening side of the Dunshire Drive properties.
Even if the screening's not plant based, but if it's fence?
Well, so.
That kind of fence would be ideal.
The, there is an existing fence that goes along that now. I understand it's in a state that Dunshire Drive properties are not happy with. So that's what we'll look at and see. Um, because that's ultimately the best sense of screening. That's going to be there, at least in the, the near term.
And you can get higher than the standard six feet high fence. I know I had a neighbor that had lights coming in and I went to the town and got a permit and we put in eight or 10.
Right, anything over, I think eight feet is your max before you need a permit from the town, but.
We got a permit. So I think that's how we put in 10 feet. So we wouldn't get their lights into our house. And I don't see why you can't do the same.
Because you can also look at the, uh, the light that's in that cul-de-sac. Who owns that?
Town. Well, probably the town owns the light, but the pole itself is probably utility provider.
So the town could probably put a shield on that light.
If they have a, if they could put a downward shield, it's a pretty easy fix. But I know the comment letter requested kind of a reduction in the lighting. That's totally up to the town. I don't have any control over that.
No, I get that. But what about, and then what about the lighting that you're going to put in the parking lot in the back?
Um, the lighting plan, it's all, it would all have to be dark sky compliant with new Chelmsford lighting regulations. So it's going to be less than 5,000 Kelvin, uh, downward shielded, all that.
Yeah.
Just have a, a fast question or two, if I might?
Of course.
I'm a little bit familiar with some of the geology up there. Piece of land not far from that. It's bottom land, river bottom land largely. My experience is that you go down not very far and it's sand and gravel.
There is a layer, yeah.
So I'm, the question then is, is the culvert really the issue? Or is in fact the water level about the same on both sides of the culvert anyway? And it's really just, this is where, this is where the, uh, the groundwater is.
Well, I do believe that that's part of the kind of hydro, hydrologic study that they're trying to do on the area to really determine what is the issue and why is it not moving?
Yeah, okay.
It could be that there is, um, a balance of elevation on both sides of the culvert. And that's a, a result of a high groundwater that wasn't accounted for originally. But again, that's out of our hands and what we can do, all I can do is propose what I can on my site to meet stormwater standards.
Well, I, I ask mostly because it would be a pity to take a whole lot of steps to try to alleviate a problem that you can't actually alleviate.
Like based on Concom discussions on another project in the area, there is a, an, what you're saying may be true, but there is also a culvert issue being blocked.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously a mix of both. And I, I guess my question is, how much of this is culvert and how much of this is basic geology?
Based on the discussion at Concom on the other project, a lot of it is culvert related.
Because it sure would be nice to get that thing cleaned out.
Yeah.
I do believe that that culvert is having issues with debris blocking it in most scenarios. Right, a 12 inch pipe is, if it's, you know.
You can see, if you walk up there after a storm, we've got a whirlpool going, it's up almost to the road. You walk across the street.
And it's low. Okay, so that answers the question right there effectively.
Yeah. Is there another reason for that? I don't know, but I mean, it clearly is not going, it just can't get through.
Okay, thank you.
I think I see, that answers my question.
Um, okay. I'll take a motion.
To continue? Well, I will move to continue.
Second.
Okay, on favor?
When are we continuing to?
Well, we did conservation for 14 days, so we can do this as well.
Okay. Um, what's our schedule like in 14 days? Becky, do you know?
I do. Um, let's see, you have two new public hearings and a minor site plan review under administrative review. So you have three new projects on October 23rd.
It's going to be kind of busy.
And potentially a continuation for.
Want to do it the one after? All right, two new public hearings. We'll push this to the one after. So that will be.
The one after would be November 13th.
November 13th, okay. Um.
I second it.
Yep.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Joel, you're not voting? I think you're voting now.
Voting now.
Yeah, we're alternate today.
You're voting.
I can vote on this?
Yes.
Bye.
Okay, um.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have Nancy Chen in Garrison Place, request for continuation.
I will move to continue.
Uh, I would like to amend that.
Okay.
I move that we continue it one last time and request that she appear without any more continuations.
I think that's an excellent request.
Yeah, okay. Are we continuing it to?
October 23rd.
The next time?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, move to continue it to, what is that, October?
23rd.
23rd?
Did Mike second? Did you second it?
Hmm, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second.
Okay.
We're good.
Um, we had a second? Motion by Mike, second by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, next up, we have our schedule. If you guys are wanting to leave, we'll take a 30 second break and give you your opportunity to escape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so our next meeting is on the 23rd.
If I may, could the board just make a motion to also continue the first continued public hearing, which is a site plan and special permit request? Technically, we need a motion here too.
That's true.
That's the one we always do, right?
Yeah, I move to continue that to the next meeting.
Second.
Wait, what is it? We're continuing now?
The site plan special.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll provide, actually, long, like a year ago, like looked at different towns' things and to what things were in common and what things were unique. And then also did a general pass through our special permit rules and regulations. So I'll try to summarize all that and bring it next, next time.
Okay.
Great.
Get the ball rolling.
Okay, um, next up, our schedule.
Do you second?
Oh, so do we have a second? Sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Chris, second by Anita, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a meeting on the 23rd of October and then we have our next meeting, we'll getting into the holidays in November and So we have, our next meeting would be the second Thursday in November, which is the 13th, I mean Wednesday in November, which is the 13th, and then the next one is the night before Thanksgiving, which I'm not gonna be here. I'm teasing, no one's gonna be here.
No, so these are the dates that we are having?
We're looking at the dates on the agenda, so we're not gonna have, we wouldn't have a meeting on the 27th, so the next meeting after that would be
December 11th.
December 11th.
Okay, got it.
And the only thing I would say is, if it looks like we're getting Too dense of a calendar To have one meeting in November and December might be not enough, so we might think about either adding In the 20th of November or adding in the 18th of December, if it seems like that's necessary. I don't know if people have a preference between those, I don't know, I mean, I hope, I think we should be able to make a decision about that by the next meeting. If we need to do it, but if everyone would be thinking about if we have to do another one, which one you would prefer, scheduling wise.
You said November 20th?
November 20th versus December 18th, I think. Is everyone in accord with that as a tentative penciled in plan? Okay. Liaison updates. The housing advisory board got canceled, so I have no, I have no update.
Just a short one, so the zoning board of appeals met last week on October 3rd and there was a couple of continuances, one of them was The 40B that's been discussed from Moro's Ave, that was continued without discussion, so it was a very short agenda and another smaller project was
Which one on River Nakron?
Actually, Moro's Avenue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, over in North Chelmsford, so that was continued, so that was a very short agenda, so I don't have a report on that.
Anyone else?
Conservation commission meeting met last night, they started their hearing on this past project as well. And there was a special appearance by Nibby, the educational beaver.
Very cute.
Huge beaver.
It's only two years old, it's half the size it's gonna be.
It's about 30 to 40 pounds right now.
I once had a baby beaver about this big, right next to my foot. Because I was out doing turtle tracking and I was standing on it, this little High point in the stream generally, so I was just like pretty much standing in water. And then he would swim around and he crawled up right next to me. And then it must have been the mother, father, whatever, slapping the tail, like very unhappy about this, I just didn't move.
You notice how loud they can make a noise with their tail?
Yeah.
It's quite something.
Very loud. Anyway, go ahead.
So it was a really cool experience, it was the first appearance since her new status as an educational beaver. And she did pretty well.
Yeah.
She sat right there and ate.
Yep.
Why can't we get people like that at our hearings?
Well, Jane was talking about some partnerships that she'd like to do with the conservation commission And the company that they work with, Beaver Solutions, because in the past, when there's been flooding caused by beavers David Coons has been called in and when they call a trapper To take care of the beavers, they have to euthanize the beavers, they can't relocate them. So Jane is really trying to make people more aware of other potential solutions that might be out there, instead of relocating. Because like she said, if you remove the beavers and it's a good habitat for beavers, others will move in. So, she said there are plenty of alternatives out there that they'd like to work with the town on, so it was a good Good discussion that might lead to some really good improvements in the future of how those are handled.
And I was at the board of health, that was met Monday night, and They're just waiting on Tan Hildreth for the results of the That the landowner was required to submit, to hire, basically to conduct a 21E to submit that to DEP and then They're waiting, board of health is waiting to hear back from DEP on that. So that's basically on hold until there's material for them to review.
So they, do they have any expectation of when that, it will be forthcoming?
I don't think they have any expectation, particularly if they're waiting for DEP, there is no
I mean, is it like in the next month or in the next 10 years, like?
Yes.
Conservation's still waiting for natural heritage as well, for that site.
That will be sooner, that will be sooner. And then also they'll be, they deferred till next month, the discussion of whether they'll take their meetings On, have their meetings publicly available through Zoom, so for people to see it on Chelmsford telemedia, so We'll see what they conclude from that. And then other than that, it was more routine board of health stuff.
So that project still goes through? All the other, continues to the end, even though they're?
Yep.
Yeah, because they're independent.
I mean, for one thing, because of the possibility of an appeal being
Yeah, okay, I didn't know what the process was.
Yeah, so those processes still have to play out.
Which is good.
Oh, yeah, it's great, they will have a lot more answers.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to having that information available to us if and when it is, or when it is, I guess. Okay. Annual goals and objectives, I wanted to add something to this. I have been thinking a lot about last week's North Road decision and thinking about the I mean, I feel like we are a bit hamstrung. And one of the things that we were hamstrung by that we could potentially rectify is our own zoning Parameters for the lot. I mean, I don't know if this is a possibility, but it seems to me that we, at the end of the day, were told by the lawyer that if our If our setbacks, et cetera, were met, that we couldn't have any recourse, but kind of like The warehouse amendment being prompted by a situation where we had a warehouse that we couldn't Get out from under. I wonder if there's some way we could tweak our zoning in such a way that we wouldn't have been quite so hamstrung.
In this case, I don't think there is, because they would have bought more lots.
That's the problem.
They bought enough lots to To not have an issue with our setbacks.
Okay.
If we had changed the setbacks, they would have added another property to their
I think we should do a zoning
We should look at it.
Revision subcommittee. That should start banging away at some of these Things, because I feel like we're not making much progress and time marches on.
Like you have the issue with the height in North Chelmsford, remember those condos?
I can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, like we had, like, I'm just thinking
It's the number of floors.
Floor, okay, floors.
It's the number of floors, right, it was the stories of the townhouses in North Chelmsford that were built. It still meets the criteria 35 feet, but they're four stories and the building code only allows three. So.
But it's a definition of how that's counted, like
But in a subdivision, we can't look at the elevation, we don't look at the, it's not part of our bylaws. So that's something that should, could change in our bylaws, we could change that they have to propose the floor plans and the elevations.
Maybe we could ask council to help guide us and
Maybe, I don't know.
Recommend if there's Remember, you can have a subdivision.
Yeah.
But the things that are built within that subdivision still have to abide.
Yeah, it's still the same thing.
So, you know, it's just a matter of whether you jump up and down at the subdivision level, or you jump up and down.
Well, I just don't know, how do you, if it's allowed three stories and you have four, how does that get by the building inspector?
Yeah, well, that is a good question, and one which well deserves an answer.
And then they took out the walk-up staircase, but then now the people that are buying it are putting staircases back in, so they're gonna get four stories. So, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Do they call that a loft storage space or some weird thing?
I think that, that's roughly what they did.
But they put windows all up in there, it's a full size.
You know, the same thing as if you develop the garden level. I mean, the garden level is the basement in some places, or it's
That's their basement, they're calling it, but it's on grade.
Right.
You walk right in. So, I don't know, it's just technicalities, the building inspector up there for that one there looked at it and he has approved it, but then Anything after that has no windows above or anything, but the first couple that were built are truly four stories.
Right, I mean, I watched the meeting where somebody came and spoke about that.
Yeah, it's still there, go take a look, they're big. Big, big townhouses, but it is what it is, it's
Okay, so if we were to develop, have a zoning revision subcommittee. We have our I would like to have that question looked at, if there's some way we could have Looked with the benefit of the retrospectoscope, if there's something that we could do That would have given us more ability to at least change, make it smaller, or
What was our objective? Was our objective to stop a project? Or was our objective to make it comply to some particular set of standards that we
Well, I think the sentiment
Those are two different questions.
I think the sentiment of most people on the board and of the neighbors was that it was too big. But we couldn't do anything about the size because the setbacks were there. So I don't know if there's some way we could make it have not been able to be so
Make the size a determinant. I guess I'm getting to a bigger question or a problem that I see of us Or seeing a project, deciding we want some particular outcome to that project, like stop it, make it half the size, whatever that may be. And then running around looking for excuses that we can apply To swing the hammer on top of this project that may not really have anything to do with our ultimate objective. If our objective is we want it to be half the size, then our rules ought to say, this is a maximum size.
Well, that's the question, what would our rule be?
Right, I mean, again, and I think this was a very specific case, because like, you know, for me, like it didn't I don't think that fit the neighborhood, I don't think that should go there, like, point blank, right?
People have been through there, yeah.
Yeah, they're pointing.
Like, do we need to tighten up our, like, what do we want this town to look like? Do we need to tighten up our zoning To make sure that things are not too big, too high?
And a broader question, to what degree should we decide what our town looks like and not The more general market, the way that life develops on this planet, you know? I don't think we get 100% right to dictate exactly what every house looks like in town, or we're gonna be telling people they can't put polka dots on their paint.
The town meeting can vote on that, that's the whole purpose of town meeting.
Well, town meeting has to approve. Town meeting would have to approve anything we propose.
It would.
So, like, again
In which case, we've got the public element in there.
Based off of how many people have started to come to these meetings and like all the, you know, between, you know, we can list all, you know, from Reason why half of us are on this board the last few years, obviously, there's a problem with our zoning, because a lot of people are pissed off. And so maybe we should look at it, and I think that's a valid Point, Deirdre, is to look at our zoning and, or ask council to help us or look at other towns.
I think it's worthwhile, I was not on the board at the time when the project that Mike referenced is discussed, but I don't think anyone tried to kill it, but to his point, what's fair is fair. If I'm developing a project in one part of town, I should have to abide by the same stories that everybody, you know, the rules that apply to everybody else, there shouldn't be somebody that can, you know, Dust around the corners and somehow evade what we're trying to do.
Yeah, nor should we unequally apply one standard on one applicant and then not apply it on another.
Remember, when we have a project near front of us, we do not have the town in the back of the room, we have the neighborhood in the back of the room. The rest of the town is largely somewhere else. So, we should never mistake
We're hitting all the neighborhoods in town, so we're getting them all in here.
Well, we're hitting them one by one, that have been rotated.
Yes, and they all seem to be coming out and they all seem to be, you know, upset.
Yeah, there's angst every time.
And there's no sense of putting the citizens of this town
Something next door to me.
Right, this town, you know, through that, these people, you know, I mean, they're coming, this must be a year and a half coming to these meetings.
Yeah, they did.
So if there's something that we need to do that We know of something that we, you know, maybe, to your point, North Road or North Chelmsford or whatever, River Nak Is there something we can do that can make it better? Without, you know, closing the door to all development, because that's not what our point here is.
I'm not looking to do that.
It's just the right balance. There has to be a balance.
We're willing to accept.
The town, the town meeting ultimately decides that.
True.
So
They have been doing so for 70 or 80 years.
Okay.
We've already identified
Right.
Areas that we want to focus on.
So why don't we do that?
That's what we need to do, is focus on the particular problems.
And I would like to add to that, if other people don't disagree. That particular point that we just recently experienced where I felt Uncomfortable with the outcome and felt like there was nothing I could do about it, and it might have just been the Dover amendment and we were
I think anything we put in place would have gotten overwritten by that Dover amendment, so I don't think there's anything we could have done.
And that's the same kind of problem you run into with comprehensive permits on ZBA. There's, just the criterion that you have are so much more That you just have to be more accepting of things you don't want.
Yep.
Because the state just doesn't give you the ability to make those kinds of decisions, like for example, for us You know, in the recent case, we were concerned about pedestrian safety as a traffic concern. In the case of a comprehensive permit, you have to show that there's actually gonna be a real, honest to goodness, traffic hazard You know, in order to even have a hope of maybe passing appeal. So, you know, I think the Dover is that kind of a thing, where
Just a big roadblock.
It's just, it just means that you can't apply the things that you're used to applying. So, I think your point is well taken, we should at least be aware of what things we can apply, and at least know what tools we have in our toolbox.
Yeah, I want to avail myself of the tools in the toolbox, exactly, and know that I did that, and I wasn't confident of that.
Yeah.
And that might just be my not knowing enough. Okay. So, what do you think? Should we, should we, should we? Does anyone want to volunteer for a zoning rewrite subcommittee to attack the
I don't think we should take that on, I think we should focus on the areas that we've already identified.
Well, that's what they, that's what they can start with. Okay, but for those particular areas?
Yeah, let's not
Are we not gonna talk about them in the work sessions?
I think we should, I think we should put it on the agenda, like, because we got Fall Town Meeting coming up, so this, we're working for Spring Town Meeting, which At least isn't that far away, so we should, the areas that we identified, I know one of them was On 27, that corner there that we want.
Kate's Corner.
Kate's Corner, thank you.
Yeah.
I can't remember the other ones, but I
129.
Yeah, let's just pick one or two and do them right, if we give ourselves too broad a palate, we're not gonna get anything done.
Correct.
But I think, you know, like, we've got some low-hanging fruit, let's get, let's work on those so we can get
Okay, so what, should we do Kate's Corner as a work session at the next, before the next meeting?
Yeah.
And if we don't have too long of an agenda
Everybody pull out the zoning map, everybody study it, everybody, you know.
All right, let's do that. Okay, next up we have, and we don't, to my knowledge, still don't have the criteria, is that right?
We do not.
All right, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff here to chomp through while we wait for the criteria, so let's just try to be up to speed when the criteria come.
Could we take this off the agenda until the criteria come?
Yep.
Yeah, let's do that.
That's a good idea.
Same thing with the floodplain bylaw, because we don't have the map yet, correct?
Okay.
So, those will get tabled until we actually have the information, then we'll put them back on.
Yeah, great.
All right, and then we have no meetings, minutes, and so I will take a motion.
Make a motion.
So moved, or did you beat me to it?
Mike moving, Anita seconding.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.